... the Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests. In each event, the item will be removed from the content agenda and considered separately. The City Clerk will read the items recommended for approval. City Clerk?
Approved minutes for the January 25, 2020, called meeting for the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah and the January 28, 2020, meeting of the Board of Commissioners for the City of Paducah, received and filed documents. Reappointment of Edward Healy to the Electric Plant Board. This term shall expire February 6, 2020. Reappointment of David Barnett to the Board of Ethics. This term shall expire February 10, 2023. Reappointment of William E. Shannon to the Paducah Water Board. This term shall expire January 6, 2024. Reappointment of Beverly McKinley to the Code Enforcement Board. This term shall expire February 26, 2023. Personnel actions.
Second.
Commissioner McElroy?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Abraham?
Aye. Okay, ordinance and adoptions.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Accepting the Bid of JSC Terminal LLC DBA Midwest Terminal for the City's Fuel Supply for the 2020 and 2021 calendar years and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract per saying. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah hereby accepts the bid, JSC Terminal LLC DBA Midwest Terminal, for the city's supply of gasoline diesel fuel and diesel fuel off-road at a price of .12 per gallon above OPIS, as well as Valtech Marine Gasoline Additive and Valtech Premium Diesel Additive at a price of .04 above OPIS. Said contract is for a period of two years and contains two additional one-year options to renew if both parties agree.
Second.
Any discussion? City Clerk?
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Abraham?
Aye. Commissioner Watkins?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement and Other Associated Documents Between the City of Paducah and the Paducah Police Department Bargaining Unit. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute an agreement and other associated documents between the City of Paducah and the Paducah Police Department Bargaining Unit. This agreement shall be effective from July 1, 2020, to June 30, 2023.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Abraham?
Aye. Commissioner Wilson?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement Between the City of Paducah and Professional Firefighters at Paducah Local 168 International Association of Firefighters. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute an agreement with the Professional Firefighters at Paducah Local 168 International Association of Firefighters. This agreement will become effective July 1, 2020, and expire on June 30, 2023.
Second.
You came before our call, Mr. Willenberg and Mr. Tornup. Is there anything you guys would like to say about the signing and how smooth everything went?
I think we said a lot two weeks ago about how proud we were, that everything had gone the way it had, and I know it's tough sometimes, but we've really worked hard to build great relationships, so we really, we appreciate, as you said in your prayer, that was so beautiful, how much we appreciate the service that you do, and so we're really glad to have these contracts signed, so thank you all, everybody.
Okay, if you gentlemen will come up.
We got a vote on it.
Oh, we got a vote on it. Well, look at me. I'm ready to get it done.
You're so excited to sign.
Okay.
Commissioner McElroy?
Let's see how fast we can do this. Hi.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Abraham?
Aye. Okay. Guys, come on up. Just have a seat.
I think we do one at a time, right? You get one freaks. What you got?
It's right there, fancy pants.
Sharps. And legs.
Even though I made a speech a couple of weeks ago when we talked about this, I'd really, again, just want to thank all of y'all, our first responders, firefighters, police officers, for, you're our heroes, putting your lives on the line, especially in these days and times, a very dangerous job, and we appreciate the way you perform, the perfect your professionalism, and the way you go above and beyond to treat, keep our citizens safe, and we just want you to know that we appreciate you, love you, and thank you for serving our community.
Ordinance is introduction. Commissioner McElroy?
Yes. I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, authorizing and approving a memorandum of agreement between the City of Paducah and the McCracken County Jail to define the duties of each party as it relates to a parks department work program for Class D inmates. This ordinance authorizes and approves a memorandum of agreement with a term of March 1, 2020, to November 30, 2020, between the City of Paducah and the McCracken County Jail. This memorandum of agreement defines the duties of the city and McCracken County Jail as they relate to initiating a parks maintenance work program for Class D inmates. This memorandum of agreement shall automatically renew until terminated by either party.
Second.
City Mayor, do you want to talk a little bit about this?
I sure will. This is something we tried to get going, as the Board of Commissioners knows, several months ago, and it's amazing to me how time flies. March 1 is upon us, you know, so it's good to be able to bring this forward prior to the end of February. What we're hoping to do is get this beginning March 1, be able to kick off and utilize the inmates in the county jail system for twofold. One, to give us additional labor to help us with our needs. Secondly, to help them assist with the development of job skills. So basically, it's a win-win provision, if you will. They are willing to provide us for their inmates, basically for 48 hours of coverage throughout the week, and also provide two part-time deputies to split supervision duties throughout those 48-hour time period as well. So I think it's a wonderful thing for the city, and I appreciate the ability of the jail to work with us in this partnership.
I'm really excited about this, because we have some needs out there in terms of taking care of the city, litter pickup, sprucing the city up in terms of landscape in the downtown as we approach Quilts Week. A wonderful week in our city, but it's kind of like having company. Nothing makes you get your house better in shape than having company, so I'm super excited about this. We've done this in the past, and I think it's been really effective, and I'm really happy we're doing it again.
Those extra hands will actually, they will really help.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Commissioner Watkins?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Granting a Non-Exclusive Franchise to Comcast of the South to operate and maintain a cable system within the corporate limits of the City of Paducah, Kentucky pursuant to the terms and provisions of the Paducah Ordinance for Regulation of Cable Communications and approving and authorizing the mayor to execute the franchise agreement between the City of Paducah, Kentucky and Comcast of the South. This ordinance authorizes the mayor to execute a franchise agreement with Comcast of the South. This agreement shall have a 10-year term with an effective date of March 1, 2020. This agreement grants a non-exclusive franchise to Comcast of the South to continue to operate and maintain a cable television system within the City of Paducah.
Second.
Ms. Spencer, you want to talk to us a little bit?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Protim, Commissioner, City Manager. Also have with me tonight is Matthew Kelly from Comcast, and Matt is the Senior Management of Government and Regulatory Affairs, and I've been working with Matt for the last few years as we've been going through these negotiations. The motion that Commissioner Watkins read summarizes the new franchise agreement that we have between the City of Paducah and Comcast. Now, last month, you had some actions that you took. That was the introduction and approval of a new Chapter 22 of our Paducah Code of Ordinances, which has to do with cable communications. We updated that ordinance to reflect changes in technology and changes in state law that allowed us to have a franchise fee. So the first step was to update our ordinance. So we updated the code, and then tonight's ordinance has to do with the franchise agreement between us and Comcast. It's a new, non-exclusive franchise agreement that addresses everything that was in our code, and it also addresses the state law and an FCC order that occurred over the last few months. This process has taken much longer than we thought, but that was due to things beyond our control. That was due to changes with the state law and an FCC order. Our previous contract with Comcast expired in 2016, and since then, we've been operating with month-to-month extensions as we've been going through these negotiations. Since this is a franchise, according to state law, we had to put it out to bid. We put it out to bid, and the bid opening was last Thursday with Comcast submitting the only proposal. So this is the introduction of an ordinance for a new 10-year agreement, which would go into effect March 1, if adopted. And one of the biggest changes when you look at this agreement versus the one that we had previously is the change of levying a franchise fee. So in our ordinance from last month, we defined annual gross revenue, and in this agreement shows that we're going to have a 5% franchise fee based on 5% of their annual gross revenue. So we had to put forth the definitions before we could put it into this agreement. It also has our PEG fee, our public, educational, and government channels that we have, we're able to levy a PEG fee of .9% of our annual gross revenue for Comcast. Comcast and the city's legal team, we were using Brian Grogan of Moss and Barnett. He was our attorney that we worked with. He's a telecommunications lawyer who negotiated our previous agreement with Comcast, so he's very fluid in these types of negotiations. He was working with us as well as Comcast's legal team. So Matt is here to answer any questions. Also, I thought Matt could probably explain some of the investments that have been going on in the community by Comcast that are outside of this franchise agreement. So you've been seeing some work around town that you may not have realized it was Comcast doing it. So Matt's here, I'm here, answer questions and...
Okay. Well, thank you, and I appreciate this opportunity to speak to you. So just within the last couple of years, hopefully you've had a chance to go out to our new Xfinity store. It's got all of our products, you can touch things, you can play with them, and understand how it's not your father's cable company anymore, or your granddad's, or whatever. It's all new, and so that was about a million-dollar investment in the community. On top of that, we are investing in fiber throughout the community, and if you see some construction trucks working in along the streets, putting in big orange conduits, or, you know, working in the ground or putting stuff on the poles, if they have QC communications on them, they're actually working on our behalf. And so we've received permits, and we're working, you know, we work under the ordinance of the city to make that investment. That's well over a million dollars more of investment that we're doing in the community. And then on top of that, we're adding quality networking that will connect Paducah to other parts of our system throughout the region, which will improve any reliability, make it to where if someone cuts a fiber somewhere outside of town, that it will not cause services to go down here in the city. So it'll help with all of that. So if you have any questions, I would say I would like to thank Mr. Arndt and Ms. Spencer. They were tough negotiators, but I think personally, I believe the city is protected under this agreement, as well as the citizens', and it's fair for Comcast.
I would like to give some public kudos to Matt and his team. We talked at Gold Rush the other day about the Xfinity store and how we use that as our model for our customer experience department, so kudos to you guys, because it's a wonderful environment you guys have out there.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Moving down the page. Under discussion, we want to talk a little bit about opportunity zones. And that is, oh.
There she is.
Oh, there you are. Okay.
I think Michelle just stepped out to go find you. Yeah.
Commissioners, I am very happy to share with you a wonderful project that is here in Paducah, and we are taking advantage of it. For the record, and those out there, my name's Tamara Tracy, I'm the planning director, have the privilege of serving in that capacity, and today I want to talk to you about opportunity zones. Opportunity zones are the most wonderful and powerful tool that we've yet used, but so few people know about it, and so hopefully tonight, we can share a little bit about it. But first, I wanted to give you a little context. We have a lot of projects going on in Paducah, a lot. And as you'll see on the screen, we have the TIF district, which is shown in green, the Build grant, which we were funded, is shown in blue, and then what you see around it called the Opportunity Zone 300 and Opportunity Zone 400. That's what we're talking about tonight, because when you put all three of these things together, it makes an incredibly powerful impact upon our downtown and upon our community, because this is the heart of our community, and from the heart, everything blossoms all around us. So let's talk a little bit about opportunity zone, because it's going to be an incredible, hopefully, an incredible tool and incredible impact. What are opportunity zones? Opportunity zones, they're an economic developmental. But most importantly, and it is the distinction of it, it's an incentive. It's an incentive enacted in our tax code that incentivizes people who have capital gains, to the annual total of $2.7 trillion worth in the United States. People who have capital gains are incentivized to invest in these zones. These zones have been chosen by every state's governor. They're allowed 50, well, Kentucky was allowed 50 zones, and those zones are census tracts. And so we were very lucky to have two selected. We asked for four, but we got two, so yay. Guess anyone wants to be too greedy? And those census tracts are considered by the federal government to be distressed. Here in Paducah, you will recognize that some parts of these areas are distressed, but not all parts of it, just parts of it. And that's what we're going to talk, I'm going to share with you a little bit more. What makes this project or this tool so unique is the fact that there is no local government requirement, there's no program that we have to administer, there's no paperwork for us to shuffle, no approvals for you to stamp. It is completely held within the tax code. And that is where most people scratch their head and say, wait, how can this be an incentive if you don't have all these requirements that I have to meet? Well, that's the beauty of it. It unleashes the power of the private sector to do its thing, to do what projects people want to do in these zones. Now, you'll see that these zones are pretty substantial in size, and so there's a lot of different opportunities. These two zones that you're seeing up on your screen are two parts of our community. The one on the right, which is the 300, the zone one, excuse me, Zone 2 is the number 300, now loosely refer to them as 300 and 400. 300 covers all of downtown, all the TIF, all the Build grant. It also includes lower town. So it's obvious that these tracts are not, all areas of them are distressed, only parts of the areas are distressed. The next zone to the left of it on your screen is the 400 census tract. That includes many industrial and manufacturing facilities that we have along the riverfront. It includes our big portion of our Greenway Trail. It does include Noble Park. It includes two neighborhoods, the, well, actually, if you break them down further, there's three or four neighborhoods, but generally, it's the Northside Neighborhood, Roland Town, Glendale, or, excuse me, Glendale is the neighborhood that's not included, it's that little notch out next to the cemetery. But all of those homes are included in that opportunity zone, and part of those area is under distress, other parts are not, hence the qualification. But there's a lot of opportunity in there, a lot of projects can go on. So what are we trying to do to bring this to people's attention? We're bringing it to their attention because there's a lot of money to be had, a lot of money for them to make, and a lot of money for them to save. The thing about capital gains is you never, frequently, you stumble in upon the situation where you have capital gains and you didn't quite really realize it, such as selling a piece of real estate for a significant profit. So anybody, anywhere, you'd be surprised who has capital gains, so we want to talk this up a bit, because when you have capital gains, the only thing you can think about is paying Uncle Sam a big chunk of money. Well, instead of paying Uncle Sam a big chunk of money, how about if you put it in an opportunity-type fund that can help the community and make you some money? Now, I am not a tax accountant, and I don't pretend to be, and I don't even like accounting. But, and so therefore, I encourage people in their own situation, because every situation is unique, to consult a tax accountant in this manner, but I do think that every person should think about this possibility and make sure that they do discuss it with their accountant or financial advisor, because there is opportunity to make significant amounts of money as well as help the community, which is exactly what we want to do with the project we have undertaken. We have undertaken the project of developing Paducah's investor prospectus, just like a stock prospectus. We would like the community and other people outside of our community to invest in us. So when you have an investment, you need to have a prospectus, a portfolio, to show them what you have and why it's good. Not all communities are doing this, and I think this is one way that we can be ahead of the curve and ahead of the markets, because across the United States, there are 8,700 opportunity zones. We just have two of them. But ours are unique in that they are, that we are very pro-investment, very pro-development, and we have our opportunity zones in areas that can benefit from other incentives, such as the TIF and such as the Build grant. Now, in putting forth the projects in this prospectus, we want them to be transformative. We want them to basically illustrate the wide variety of things that they can, that people can invest in, in Paducah. And what makes this prospectus, prospectus unique is not the fact that it has a lot of projects in it, because everybody can make a laundry list of projects, but what is unique about this is that we actually show you how the deal can be made. We call that our deal flow, and that's key, because in this prospectus, which right now only has six projects in there, but it can be added or deleted as these come to fruition, but we've got six projects, and in there, we identify the deal flow, the flow of potential partners and potential sources of income and the probable expenses. So we show you generally how it's supposed to work. I have just selected a couple of them, but it is in the document that you have in front of you, and again, I apologize, I'm not a printer either, not an accountant, not a But you will see all six of those projects, and I've just put on the screen a couple of them to give you and the audience the variety. We've highlighted the Northside Neighborhood for single-family project as well as multifamily project. It's located very close to PSAD, so it's a wonderful opportunity for multifamily, for potentially students to live there, as well as a great opportunity for single-family and homeowners. The other project that we've highlighted that I want to bring your attention to is the Columbia Theater, because it's unique in that this gives the investor a philanthropic angle as well as potential money-making angle. And this one is going to be very fluid in its nature, but some, and some, that will be attractive to some investors, not all, but some. Also, a big part of this prospectus, because we are basically saying, invest in our community, we need to share in this prospectus about our community. So in the beginning, we have a few pages that describe Paducah and what makes us special, and we also talk about our regional assets, because a community, as you all know, is more than just one project, more than one place. It's the conglomeration of all of our communal efforts. So we have a regional assets described in there, and also, what I think is most interesting to read in detail is the last page. And I mentioned I was not an accountant, not a printer, but I am an economist, and so my favorite page is the last one, which is the economic data on Paducah. It talks about the major employers, and it gives a little bit of trivia, which I think is really interesting, is that our, where our GDP as a city relates to the state of Kentucky and relates to the world. Our GDP is the same as the country of Barbados. I think that's pretty interesting. It means we're doing pretty doggone well.
I shared that with Dr. Reese, by the way.
So we've developed this document. It can be used in its entirety, it can be pulled out in one page, used at a time, so if you are talking to someone who is interested in one of those... So if you, if you are talking to someone who is interested in one of those projects or interested in the background on Paducah, you can pull that page out. This prospectus is available on our website. Anybody can download it and share it. You can split it up into different pages, different projects, and use it for PR, because that's what a prospectus is for. Right now, the consultant that helped us construct this prospectus is now shopping this out to, to larger opportunity zone funds that are national, so hopefully, we can get some national traction. But soon, we're going to be bringing this to the attention of the, of the wider Paducah investing, investment community. So with that, I'd like to answer any questions you have. This is a very unusual tool, and it frequently generates questions.
I know we are trying to have, there is a speaker that's coming later sometime in March, either through the city or SBA, that's still to be determined, but that will be here. So I think there's a, the more information we can get out locally and then across the country, this is, this is a great tool.
Yes.
I know you said we did apply for multiple dis, tracts or whatever, to be approved. So there were a couple other that were submitted, and the state made the final application.
The governor chooses the final census tracts. And Governor Bevin chose those two. We had selected two more that went along the river, but he only gave us two. And many communities didn't get any, so.
Anybody else? Yes. I'd just like to just comment on, just a couple of things. One, it is a wonderful tool that communities can use. It is a, a great asset to those with capital gains, because you take a pretty big hit when you have, when you have, when you're in that situation. The other part of, of this that, that excites me, and I know obligation-wise, you talked about what the city, you know, let's market our city. We have, I feel like we have quite a few things to invest in. But also, the areas, when we look at neighborhoods, those areas where, like the Northside Neighborhood, I think if, if we, when we move forward with this, the opportunity be, be a dual opportunity. And what I mean by that is, if you look within these neighborhoods, just right off, right off bat, if your credit score is 500, you can't really operate in the zone because you're not in the zone, right? And if you look at those numbers, there are a whole lot of bad things associated with those numbers. So we have a very giving community. We have a lot of folks in this community that would be willing to partner, and let's, let's teach how to raise that credit score. You raise that credit score 100 points, all of a sudden, that's a major difference within that household, within that opportunity zone. So it's not just the investor coming and making a lot of money. What we're doing is, we are pulling our folks up and say, look, let's learn this, you can learn this. I, I never will forget, we went down to Fulton County Correctional Facility, and I'll say this to prove a point, and they had started this welding program. And I went in and I talked to the guys, and this one guy had been in jail for so long, and he, the only thing he ever done was sell drugs. And when the, the instructor started to teach him, he looked at me, he said, I didn't even know I could learn how to do anything like this. I always thought that was for someone else, but it's not. It's, it's for you. So when we look at, you know, you're talking about, you don't, certain things you don't do, well, you're pretty sharp. And some folks just learn differently. But these are the types of things that a lot of folks within this opportunity zone think, well, I don't really maybe make enough money to, to participate. I don't know how to increase my credit score, to maybe at some point get a small loan, to take advantage of what we're bringing to our community. So I think, have taken that initiative as a, as a city, when this starts to happen, that's a, that's a dual, that's a dual win-win for us. And so it's, I, I remember when these opportunity zone came on, came online, and I reached out to you, and, and no grass grows under your feet. I shouldn't say that. But yeah, I think it's a great opportunity.
Yeah, and you're exactly right. Everybody benefits from that. Housing is, is the number-one investment that people make that can improve their net worth. And by improving their credit score, by getting into house, housing, you can literally break the cycle of poverty by that, by doing that. So that is, you're spot on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we are moving along. City managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. I ask Madam Clerk to play a video. We talked about the, the new ScopeMyProject Open Counter Software we rolled out last week, and Pam did a wonderful voiceover working with the Community College on this, and I just wanted to share this with you. This is now available online. We actually had it playing down there in the CX Department entryway in City Hall this morning, and it just blew my mind, so I thought we'd share this with you guys tonight, if you would please.
Are you an entrepreneur, business owner, developer, or someone working to scope or launch a project? If so, Paducah has a new tool with you in mind. The Open Counter Business and Zoning Portals are designed to help you through the permitting process and discover the appropriate zoning locations for your type of business. With this web-based tool, you can quickly navigate and understand the requirements for opening a business right here in Paducah. Use it to determine which permit you'll need to submit, get preliminary estimates for permit fees, and find zoning information. This allows you to scope your project with confidence and have better information as you go through the city's permitting process, from sufficient to approval. This tool will eliminate surprises and increase efficiency by improving communication on both ends of the counter. Open Counter is easy to use. The first step is to visit scopemyproject.padukaky.gov. To quickly check the zoning for your project, visit the zoning portal. To scope your entire project, visit the business portal. Each project is different, so be sure to answer the questions. At the end, you can download the summarized guides, the specific to your project. This summary will include zoning information, permits needed, and a preliminary estimate of permit fees. Now you are ready to start your conversation with the city. In addition to the summary of your project, you can request to talk to someone with the city to move your project forward. You will be connected to staff who can answer zoning, permitting, and development questions. If you're ready to start working on your project, go ahead and create a free account with a user name and password. Setting up an account allows you to save your work. Plus, you can get additional information, including permit applications. The goal of the Open Counter Tool is to turn business dreams into realities. Give it a try, so that we can grow Paducah's business community. Visit scopemyproject.padukaky.gov.
Awesome.
Good job.
Awesome. Makes me want to do a project.
And we just rolled that out this week, and already, we had three or four, we're trying to confirm the number of people that actually have saved their, their proposed project they're working on, so it just shows that it is being used already, just the first day it rolled out. So we were excited about that. And we also have two open houses scheduled for this week, one on Thursday and one on Friday, Thursday from 9:00 to 11:00, and Friday from 2:00 to 4:00. We'll have team, team members available to help them use the program, kind of show how it works, so we're really excited about that. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor Protam.
You've really got a TV voice, Pam.
Early morning.
Comments from the board?
I don't, I'd just like to say on Thursday, well, actually, some people are already at League of Cities, but there are national, there are state city day and city night. Then on Thursday, it's the Paducah Day, Paducah Advocacy Day in Frankfurt, and we have about 70 people going from our community to meet with our three key secretaries, Secretary Jim Gray with Transportation, Secretary Rebecca Goodman with Energy and Environment, and Secretary Mike Berry with Arts and Culture and History, or Tourism. So we have a lot of other meetings going on, and then that night is West Kentucky Thank You Night with Governor Andy Beshear. So leaving at 6:15, back about 10:15.
It's a long day.
Awesome.
I'm just really excited. The Paducah Music Playground is moving along. This is a project that's funded by Garden Clubs of Paducah and Garden Club members, and with Mark Thompson's help, beautiful, beautiful instruments have been ordered, and this is going to be something that sets this area apart. It's going to be gorgeous, and you're going to want the children to run away so you can play on these instruments. We're super excited, planning a great, fun celebration of this, hopefully, early May, so.
I know it's in Noble Park, but what, what section?
Between the Link and the Amphitheater. Is that right, Mark?
Yes.
Look, there's an enclosed sidewalk that you think, what in the world goes in here?
Perfect.
It's going to be a music playground.
Okay, we have a couple of folks and citizens from the audience wanting to speak. Want to make sure I say his last name. Mary, is it Brian? Wants to talk about the Class D workers.
I just have a question, whether or not, or in the contract, will there be something that says there are going to be gender and racial parity? Like, both men and women will be involved in working for the city, and that there'll be kind of parity racial, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Equal opportunities that we try?
Yes, so that, that, not just the guys?
Right, I get you.
And not just, you know?
I understand, I understand.
Okay, that was just whether it was going to be in that contract stipulated, because I think that the more we do little things like that, the more we're saying we want diversity.
Right.
So, is it already in there, or do you know?
No.
Oh, okay. Could, could you add it?
Would that be up to?
It'd be up to the jailer and who's eligible and who's already working different places.
Yeah. But we could ask.
We could make that request.
Yeah, yes, if, you know, to say that.
They have to meet certain criteria.
We would, we would.
Could we ask that?
Like, to see this.
That we have both men and women, if they're eligible?
Yes.
Cultural diversity.
If the Board of Commissioners so chooses, we can, otherwise, we won't.
Well, I don't think it hurts to ask.
I think, I think it's great to ask. Good point. And, you know, if we can.
Good point.
It's really up to them and their rules.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Randy Beeler, like to talk about, comment on opportunity zone.
Three minutes. I've been coming down here for about three years. I've had this discussion before, I think it was like September 27th, 2018. I was looking at the opportunity zone, it's a great deal, and I do understand that the governor's the one that appropriates the areas. My question, same now as it was then, I think I addressed you, Mr. Watkins, on this, we grew up not far apart. South Side's getting nothing. Now, I know we got asphalt on 10th Street, 9th Street, and 6th Street. I do understand that they tore sand bowls down. It's probably one of the most impoverished areas is the South Side of town. The value of the property's down over there. The only new construction is, well, once again, Mr. Watkins, we remember when the South Side was booming, car lots, fuel, grocery stores. If you drive through there now, folks, there's just nothing there. I mean, I know there's a few things, and we went, we went through a few of those before. But I still don't see any progress over there. The hotels are still standing, I don't know if there's anything going. I know Kentucky Care is fixing to build a new place, and I do know Vionne Windtech is adding on, and I'm in the construction business, I'm well aware of all that, but I still see the same old drab areas, and I drive through it every day. As a matter of fact, as I've said before, I grew up two blocks from here. I've seen the South Side go from boom to nothing. If you looked at the same map I looked at, everything was north of Adam Street and west of 6th Street. And I understand there's a lot going on. Is there any plans for anything to go on the South Side that maybe we're going to throw boom to us? Anybody?
I would ask, is there an opportunity to apply for opportunity zones again at some point?
Not that I'm aware of now.
Okay, it was just that one time, these two were selected.
Paducah Water Works did spend several million dollars over there in, within the last year, I guess, but that's about it.
Before my, one minute's up, off of 6th Street, I believe it's Tennessee Street, somewhere, there was some houses, there was a project over there where they built a bunch of new houses. It was low-income. You lived there for a while, and then you could assume a loan. Did any of them houses ever actually sell? Are they all still under the same contract?
Are you talking about the ones over, what, Lincoln Court?
Very nice ones, yes.
Yeah. I'm, I'm sure.
I think people are living there, aren't they?
Oh, there's people in there, it's nice. I'm just wondering why the rest of South Side town can't look like that.
You know, one comment that we hear over and over at a lot of different visits is capital goes where capital is wanted, and I know you guys are wanting it, so hopefully...
I do want it.
That will come out loud and clear.
I mean, we're not beating up on y'all, we just really would like to see South Side town look good again.
I get that, I know we worked really hard to get Kentucky Care there.
You got my three minutes, thank you.
That really should be part of the opportunity zone, the South Side. What, along that line, the old hotel, what was it, Randy, there at Sixham Bridge, was that the Continental Inn?
Continental Inn, I never met her, Gerald.
What was, what is going to happen to this? Boarded up?
It's still privately owned, I believe.
My three minutes is up, but can I tell you what happened there? They hired people that went in and stripped the whole inside of it, and actually, it's in great physical condition. I don't know what happened to the guy that was going to turn it into something, but it certainly had something to do with restrictions and regulations, and he just walked away from it. The inside was scraped. I know the guys stripped it up and in there, the construction, the block is all in excellent condition. The other old hotel, the guy was from Morton to DC, and he was doing the same thing, but he was going to try to renovate 10, 15 apartments and do some more, and they went in and told him it was like half a million dollars to upgrade the wiring. He said, I'm going home, have a good day. Now, they did tear sand bowls down, I don't know what print did that, but it did go down. Anyways, South Side town guys, let's think about it.
All right, anything else? Move to adjourn?
I should adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned.